It's 10:02, September 6th, 2022. I call to order the Coney County Council Special Meeting. A moment of silence, please. Mr. Root?
Yes, sir.
Pray with me if you'd like to.
Father, thank you for this new day that you have made. It's been very gracious to us to give us this day and help us to do good in it in return. Starting with this meeting, give us your wisdom and guidance, ears to hear, and wisdom to discern what is right for this county. Give council, that special discernment, and staff the special ability to help council carry out your purposes. In your name I pray, amen.
Start, we'll lead us to the page.
Yes, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the presence of liberty and justice for all.
The discussion item, discussion regarding funding options for our Coney County capital projects. Ms. Brock?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much. Good morning, council and members of the public. We established a Zoom call-in this morning simply for informational purposes only. I'm requesting that there be no vote today. This is simply for information as we move forward. Over the past several months of Coney County, council has directed administration, myself and staff, to move forward with plans for capital projects within the county complex here, within the former courthouse. And over the past several months, we all know the inflation of previous projects that had been approved, such as the Bounty Land Fire Substation and the match funding for the Sewer South, which at this point, we believe will need an additional $1 million, but that advertisement hasn't hit the street yet. So just looking at the upcoming potential for needed funds for the completion of and the success of these council-appointed projects, we reached out to our financial advisor, Mr. Brent Robertson with Stiefel, and Michael Kozler, who is a financial attorney that we use, and Mr. Root is very familiar with as well. So we've asked them to provide to you just a brief phone call this morning via Zoom outlining some potential options moving forward in the event that council should decide that bonding money or borrowing money is in the best interest of the county at this time to move forward with those previously stated projects. You may have to unmute them, Jennifer. I'm not sure if I set it up that they were muted on call.
It doesn't say.
Okay. Good morning, Brent and Michael. Can you guys hear us?
I kept running into this problem with others in the conference.
Thank you, Mr. Root.
I had a separate audio.
There's this one.
Yeah.
We came in and checked it out on Friday, and at that time, we were fine. I don't want too many drivers over there, but...
No, okay. And that was the one fix I made. That's what helped me up before, but...
It's the only one I made that I would have to.
You gonna go get IT?
Possibly, yes.
Can they hear us? Can y'all hear us? Michael? Brent?
Yeah. Brent says he can. Brent can hear.
They'll just have to type out all their responses.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Root, thank you. Gentlemen, I apologize for the technical holdup. Wait, unmuted here. No, it's not. Is it because we're running through this?
I guess we've done this thing here before.
I'm confused. Is it because we're running through this?
I guess we've done this thing here before.
I'm confused.
So I was trying to see if I can hear them through...
Oh, it's them through YouTube?
Yeah.
I'm assuming it's because it's through the speaker system. ...Coney Land Fire Substation and options moving forward in the event that council should decide that... Good morning, Johnny Mac. This is our first time having a voice issue. Normally, we can't quiet next to these projects. So I just set up a regular Zoom call. Waiting room is normal. Nobody's muted. They can hear us. We can't hear them. Good morning, Brent. You know, we had issues with that one earlier, so I'm wondering if it's our... What was that? Can you guys hear us?
They can hear us.
Can we hear you? Can you speak?
Check, check, check.
Oh, there we go.
It was right here.
Sorry.
Was it muted?
Blind moments. Sorry, gentlemen. We have too much technology at our fingertips.
Too many buttons.
Okay, morning.
Morning.
Thank you both for coming in for your patience while we entertained ourselves with our new sound system. Now, Brent, just for your information, the chart that you had emailed last week is provided to each council paper format. So these are just simply going over the options for potential capital improvement projects going forward. There will be no vote today. I just want them to have an idea of what we discussed last week, and Kozler obviously chime in any time when I overlook something.
So do you want me to walk through that chart, or how do you want to proceed?
So as we discussed last week, you know, we have the regular geo bond on one hand, and then the interest purchase revenue bond financing structure on the other hand. Maybe just a high-level overview of those for council's understanding. So in upcoming months or several months, should that vote time come, they'll have an opportunity of understanding of the different options available to them.
Okay, sure thing.
Thank you.
Well, good morning, everybody. Really appreciate your time. I'm gonna keep it high level. If you want to get into the weeds, let me know. But based on a call we had last week with Ms. Brock and Ms. Liddell, it sounds like the county's got some potential capital financing needs or interests in pursuing in the not-too-distant future. And they vary. And I'm looking at my list now. It sounds like there is an annex contemplated in the existing campus, the accounting administration building, parking. There may be some potential designs on what to do with the historic courthouse, and there also may be some economic development efforts of the county, maybe potentially some wastewater or water needs as well. So there's a variety of needs that are there. When you've got a mix of many different types of projects, in this case, and Michael Kozlar can jump in here if he thinks I've missed something, but typically, it really boils down to two traditional options for the county. One would be the issuance of geo bonds, and then the other one would be a structure called an installment purchase revenue bond. And working in the order that I just presented, a geo bond is pretty straightforward. Y'all have done them many, many times before. You would issue them based off of... You could do a referendum, but assuming you had sufficient available 8% debt capacity, it wouldn't require a referendum, but it would... Every bond that you issued would reduce the amount of available 8% debt capacity. Presently, based on the county's debt profile of existing geo bonds and assessed value, it sounds like, based on what I'm seeing in the 2021 audited financials, there's about $600 million of total assessed value for the county, which translates into roughly $48 million of total capacity. And of that amount, there's about $38 million available. So the county could go out, and this would be without a doubt, the easiest, most straightforward, lowest cost of funds approach for the county to finance its project, issuing a geo bond. You could issue them to run 30 years. You could issue them to run something short of that, of course. All depends on what sort of amortization schedule and debt service you want to have, which would result in a mill levy for repayment, typically would result in a mill levy for repayment. Upside of the geo bonds, it's gonna be the least expensive, easiest option to move forward with. The downside of the geo bonds, depending on what the county's existing financing needs are, so this handful of projects that I mentioned, and maybe there's some that I missed, every dollar that the county spends on those projects by issuance of a geo bond reduces the available 8% debt capacity for future projects. So I know that there have been other economic development projects that have been discussed in the past. I think there's been an incinerator project that at different points in time has come into the dialogue to the county as well. So the downside of the geo bonds is, is that if you issue those geo bonds, you're reducing your available capacity going forward either for needs or for opportunities. The answer to that is option number two, which is a structure that has been used throughout South Carolina for 25 years-ish. So it's a very long-established and accepted financing structure, not just within South Carolina, but in the capital markets. That's an installment purchase revenue bond, and that's the flow chart that you have. The... That massive flow chart and painfully small font, I apologize for that. What it's demonstrating is, for an installment purchase revenue bond, a nonprofit would issue these installment purchase revenue bonds. The proceeds of those installment purchase revenue bonds would be used for the projects. Those projects would not be owned by the county. They would be owned by the nonprofit. And so if the nonprofit issued 30-year bonds and took those proceeds and built projects for the next 30 years, that nonprofit has some degree of ownership of those projects. And I say some degree because the nonprofit doesn't have a source of revenues to repay those bonds. It can't levy taxes. It doesn't have any sort of revenue stream coming in. So it begs the question, why would an investor buy those bonds? What is their expectation of repayment? The expectation of repayment is a contract with the county, an installment purchase and use agreement. Every year, the county, from any legally available funds, would make an installment payment to the corporation that would be equal to that year's debt service owed to the bondholders. So the county would make a payment to the corporation. The corporation would make the payment to the bondholders. Bondholders walk away happy because they've paid... They've been paid in full and on time. What happens over the course of each of those payments over 30 years is that a portion of the ownership transfers from the nonprofit to the county. So every year that the county makes a payment to the nonprofit, the county acquires a piece of the assets that were financed by those bonds. And at the end of 30 years, the county has titled all of those. So the upside of an installment purchase revenue bond for the county is, it doesn't count against your 8% debt capacity because the county can make the payments from any legally available funds. If you had a fee-in lieu-of-tax agreement that you... That's either existing or that comes online, you could use those fee-in lieu-of-tax payments. If you had federal dollars that were coming in from somewhere that weren't otherwise restricted, you could use those dollars. The credit support here, and this is the real kicker for, from an investor's point of view, is that the county could also issue a general obligation bond every single year, in any year, over the course of the installment purchase revenue bond, so in this case or this scenario, 30 years. So off to the right-hand side in that flow chart I showed you, you see all of these geo bonds listed in gold font. What that represents is, is that absent any other source of revenue, the county would issue a geo bond every year under its 8% debt capacity and use the proceeds of that bond to make the payment to the nonprofit. The reason why lots of counties have done this over the last quarter century is that the only debt capacity that counts against you under that structure is the geo bond that you've issued in any given year. So you might issue a $12 million geo bond, but the debt service on it might be only $600,000 or $700,000. I mean, it depends on what your amortization period is. That means that every year, if the county issues a one-year geo bond, you'd be making a payment to the corporation, you're only gonna be bringing down your 8% debt capacity by about $800,000. So it's a way of preserving future bonding capacity for opportunities or needs, you know, like an incinerator, like an economic development project. What's the downside of an installment purchase revenue bond? You've got the nonprofit involved. It's a more involved transaction. I wouldn't call it complex, but it's more involved, and there are more parties at the table. It's a little more expensive to get them done, and they don't price quite as strongly as a geo bond. The reason being that where the county's ratings are at AA2/AA on the geo side, you would trade one notch off of that for an installment purchase revenue bond. And so by having that lower rating, the bonds would price a little bit more expensively. So that's the downside to an IPRB. A little more complicated, takes a little more time to get it done, not the cheapest cost of funds, but the opposite side of that, the good part of it, is it preserves that 8% debt capacity for future borrowing needs. That's a pretty high-level overview of the two options I think the county has. And if Michael thinks I've missed a third option or a fourth option, I invite him to jump in.
Brent, the only thing I'll add, if this... And you said it at the very beginning, if this were a single revenue-producing project like a sewer or water facility, then you also may look at a revenue bond, a more traditional revenue bond, where it is the revenues of that facility or that system that are being used to repay the debt. But here, where you have a mixed bag of projects, doing that would either not be permitted under state law or would be much more complicated, frankly, potentially even more than the installment purchase revenue bond. So again, the geo bond, very simple, lowest cost of funds, but limited flexibility for the future. The installment purchase revenue bond structure is exactly the opposite, slightly more complex, higher cost of funds, but preserves flexibility for whatever the future might hold. And of course, we talked about this last week on our call, that we are both familiar with other local governments that have issued geo bonds because they are cheaper and less complex, and then almost immediately regretted the inability to borrow for some disaster, essentially, or for some economic development opportunity that appeared within 18 months to 24 months after that. So yeah, obviously, it's up to the county and what the county's future needs might be, and therefore, it's difficult to know what that could look like because none of us can tell the future.
So I have a question. So under the IPRB bond, if we did capital improvements on the courthouse, the old courthouse, and then sold it, could we sell it since we don't own it?
So I'm not gonna... I won't cover the legal side of things on the... Yeah, I'm smiling at Michael on that one. So we have worked on IPRBs that have an economic development component to them, which is effectively what you're talking about, you know, financing an asset with the proceeds of the IPRBs, but retaining the flexibility to go ahead and effectively flip it, turn it over to someone else. From a capital market standpoint, that's not too problematic because you would just sell the bonds on a taxable rather than a tax-exempt basis. And I'll let Michael jump in here in terms of any sort of legal nuances that would go along with that.
Sure. So Brent hit one of the most important aspects of this. Any expectation that the county has that there will be private use of any of the facilities that would be financed, whether they're financed with general obligation debt or with installment purchase or any kind of debt, we would need to have that conversation upfront because the likelihood is those bonds would need to be issued on a taxable basis. And what that means is taxable for federal income tax purposes to the lender or to the investor. That is, they would be paying federal income tax on the interest that they earn by lending you the money. And the reason for that is, there are a number, and we won't get this deep into it, but there are a number of restrictions on private use or private payment. So if we reasonably anticipate that within some short period of time, call it 10 years, that the courthouse could be rented... The old courthouse could be renovated and sold, we would want to do that on a taxable basis. The same would be true potentially if we were doing something, as Brent mentioned, like an economic development project, where we were going to go in, buy land, create an industrial park, at least the portion of the proceeds spent on the dirt that was ultimately going to be either sold or leased to an entity, a private entity, we would need to consider doing that on a taxable basis. The public infrastructure, we could still potentially do on a tax-exempt basis. So with that backdrop, you can always collapse a portion of an installment purchase revenue bond transaction to pull out even assets that are pledged as security for the deal. However, if we know going in, for example, the historic courthouse is likely to be sold or leased to a private entity, then we would try to structure the deal from the beginning with both the rating agencies and any bond insurer, if we sought bond insurance, so that that asset is not actually security for the transaction. And even though it is being financed, or a portion of the renovations are being financed with debt, that it doesn't form security. Imagine if you were, just in a plain sense, imagine if you were buying 10 parcels of land, but you could convince the bank that only nine of them would form security for the borrowing, just in a traditional sense. That 10th parcel, you could simply go and transact in whatever way you wanted to because it wasn't subject to a mortgage. More or less, that's what we would be trying to do here.
And I'll just jump in and say, I mean, it's a pretty common sense approach when you think about it from an investor's point of view. The more flexibility the county wants, the more premium you're gonna pay for it. So let's just say for the sake of argument, there's lots of projects that got done, and the historic courthouse was one of them. We could build a condition into the bond issue, having a special or extraordinary call provision in there. Hey, in the event that this courthouse is sold, we retain the right to go ahead and redeem all the bonds immediately. Great. That's a nice piece of flexibility for us to have, but it comes at a cost. You know, for an investor to say, listen, I'm gonna go ahead and park my money... I'm gonna rent you my money to do this courthouse, but if you want the ability to go ahead and effectively kick me out, have me turn your bonds back in and pay me off, on the front end of the deal, I'm gonna go want to get paid a little something extra. So I think the thing to remember is, all sorts of flexibility can be baked into these transactions, but they're gonna come at a cost. And maybe not material. It just really depends on what we're trying to do.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have two questions, Chair. With regard to the fixed costs of a geo bond versus an installment bond, I assume that it's more costly to do the installment bond because you have to set up the separate entity and you're gonna have some sort of... Is it gonna be more costly just from a fixed cost standpoint, just to whether we issue 100 million or 1 million? I know we don't actually have 100 million. Say 10 million or 1 million in bonds. What is the minimum we're going to pay for a geo bond versus an installment bond, just to set up the transaction?
I don't know if I could put a number on it today. I mean, we could certainly try to pencil something out of what we think it would cost, but the way to think about the IPRBs and the GOs is that there's two different ways that it's gonna cost more. One, I think what you're talking about are the cost of issuance, those upfront costs of actually executing the deal. It's gonna be more expensive with a geo bond. Assume, for the sake of argument, they're both public offerings, so there's gonna be an offering document with both of them. But the offering document on IPRB is a little bit more involved. You're describing... There's gotta be a section in there that's describing the various documents that a geo bond just doesn't have. There's gonna be information about the county that is common to both transactions, but the over and above for the installment purchase revenue bond, that's gonna be a little bit more lifting. There's the creation of the nonprofit. The nonprofit's gonna have its own legal counsel. Because it's a land-secured transaction, there's going to be some sort of title insurance associated with it. I mean, there's just a... There's a lot of other things that go into the IPRB. Again, I'd be happy to pencil out a budget if you all get serious about, you know, thinking of borrowing. That's item number one in terms of additional cost. The other item in terms of additional cost is the interest cost on the bonds. As I said, with the county being a AA2/AA geo, that's a rock-solid rating. You're gonna get a fantastic cost of funds, whatever the market conditions are, in those market conditions for a geo bond. An installment purchase revenue bond is gonna trade one notch below that. The lower rating is gonna result in a higher cost of funds. In the current market, on about a 25-year amortization, yield indexes are showing that's about 15 basis points or 0.15%. It's not material in the current market, but you know, by the time you price, it could be higher than that. I can only tell you what the indexes are right now. So two things to keep in mind when it comes to costs. It's the upfront cost of getting it done, more expensive for the IPRB, and it's the interest rate that you get on the bonds, also more expensive on the IPRB. But the other thing, too, is that if you're doing a... If the county's doing a small transaction, 3 million, 4 million, those costs of issuance become a much... It's a lot of freight to bear for an IPRB. And frankly, if you were only doing about a $3 million geo bond, I think I'd probably still steer in the direction of a geo, because it's just not taking too much of your debt capacity away. But if you're getting up there and getting into a bigger dollar amount, the IPRBs might make more sense, especially if you want to kind of have a marker for future opportunities or emergencies if they come up. And then by the same token, that larger that geo bond deal, or I'm sorry, the larger that IPRB deal gets, the only cost of issuance that get driven off of the size of the transaction are, I mean, and I'm talking about like it's gonna ebb and flow up and down, it's primarily gonna be your ratings and your underwriters' discounts. So even though the par amount on the bonds, the IPRBs go up, the freight that they... That those bonds have to bear as a result of the cost of issuance becomes less and less because most of those costs are really gonna be fixed between either deal.
And Brent, when you say underwriters' discounts, you're referring to if we have some sort of conditions or exceptions, and they're saying, hey, we might need to... We reserve the right to sell this asset and pay off the bonds early? Is that what you're referring to?
No, the underwriters' discount is the fee that you pay to the underwriters in either a competitive or negotiated sale. If you hire an underwriter upfront, we negotiate a fee, and it's a percent of the par amount of bonds issued that they would get paid. On a geo bond that would be sold as a competitive bid, we don't see what the underwriters take home as their fee, but the underwriters' discount is built into their bid structure. So that's the underwriters' fee that they take home. What you're referring to are additional pricing premiums that might get assessed for the additional flexibility we're asking for. So say if the market was, you know, 100 cents on the dollar for a particular maturity of bonds, but oh, you know, we want a little bit of additional flexibility here. An investor might come back and say, yeah, I hear what you're saying, but for that additional flexibility, I'm only gonna pay you 97 cents on the dollar. That's how the additional premium would be assessed, or the additional cost to the county would be assessed for flexibility.
Thank you. My other question was with regard to the pier in Point West, that, as I understand it, that is... Was used... Was that a special source revenue bond? Or are y'all familiar with that vehicle that we used?
Yeah, I believe that was an SSRB, also a little bit different. That is a vehicle under state law where you are pledging a specific revenue source from a multi-county park arrangement in order to repay, again, typically, it doesn't always work this way, but typically, infrastructure related to that project. That is a very different creature under state law, under Title IV. We can certainly look at that. The difficulty here is that it sounds like only one, maybe two of these projects are really revenue generating at all. And that's why I mentioned, if this were a utility revenue... And that's why I mentioned if this were a utility revenue generation-type project, like a water or sewer plant or a part of a system, then, and that were the only project, then we would probably be talking about a Revenue Bond Act for utilities bond rather than even an installment purchase revenue bond, or frankly, even than a GO, because then you have a captured revenue source that is essentially self-funding or, you know, an enterprise fund where it should be self-sustaining. Again, a little different, a little different animal. Having said that, the nice thing about the installment purchase revenue bond structure is if you do have fee-in lieu-of-tax revenues from a new source, and the reason I say new source is you certainly don't want to take anything out of your current budget, that may be a fee-in lieu of tax and try and redirect it. But if you get new fee-in lieu-of-tax revenues, you can either internally set aside those revenues for debt service on an IPRB, or you could upfront pledge specific revenue sources if you already know what they're, what they might be. So if there is a new project that's come online that has not made its way into the budget yet, for example, something that the council may have approved this year, obviously, fee-in lieu of tax revenues are typically two to five years. A payment is typically two to five years behind because of construction and then the tax cycle. You may want to go ahead and pledge those for, as a repayment source. But so somewhat like an SSRB, but just done through the IPRB structure.
Thank you. Does the SSRB affect our available bonding capacity? Or is that a different metric?
No, it does not. It does not.
Okay, I'm going to just jump in and say, one thing on the SSRB versus installment purchase revenue bonds. And the SSRB, and I'm going to look to Michael to nod at me here to make sure I'm right. You're pledging the revenue stream under the SSRB. Under the IPRB, it can be pledged if you want to, but it doesn't have to be. So that, that's another nuance of the IPRBs that, it really depends on what your priority is. If the priority is, you really want to lock down, say you've got a fee-in lieu of tax stream. You've chosen to go through the IPRB structure, and, and we want to lock down this, this revenue stream coming in, for whatever reason, it's fee-in lieu of tax stream. We can pledge it. We can pledge it, and that money can come in, and it can go to the trustee, and it can be used to pay debt service, and it'll offset some, maybe all, of the payments that are owed to the corporations. The county never issues a GO bond. There's lots of counties that do that, that we've worked with. There's other places that they don't want to pledge it. They want to earmark it. They want to use it for that purpose, but they don't want to pledge the revenues because these counties want the ability to kind of move the numbers around. I don't, you know, we use the revenues over here, these fee-in lieu of tax streams, but we kind of like to redirect them over here. We're feeling comfortable because we've got a debt service structure, you know, and this is actually the way that Okene County's structure looks. We've got this declining debt service structure, existing GO bond structure over time. And so we're okay with using some fee-in lieu of tax money right now or any other revenue stream. But over time, as our debt structure rolls off, we're comfortable with going ahead and maybe issuing, you know, a bigger GO bond or all GO bonds to front the debt service because it'll preserve a level mill levy. And in that instance, by not pledging the fee-in lieu of tax, you can use it on whatever revenue stream. You can use it on the front end, but then you can gradually bleed it off as you introduce something like a GO bond issue to cover the payments to the corporation. So there's a lot of flexibility you can either bake in or you can leave out. And either way, it doesn't impact the credit that's being sold. I mean, it's really not going to have an impact on the rating and the cost of funds if you do that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Madam, do you have any thoughts you want to say?
I don't. Thank you both, Brent and Michael, for taking the time to speak with the council and myself this morning. I feel like we will have more questions going forward as we narrow down some cost estimates on what these potential projects may be. And if there are future questions, if you don't mind, I'll share individual contact so that we don't have to call a special meeting for a specific question. I just wanted to make sure everyone knew we had options going forward. We don't have any specific dollar amounts on the table at this time. But as those dollar amounts come in, and what we've seen with the grant for, specifically the grant for Sewer South, we anticipate at least a million above what we had estimated three years ago. So I just want to make sure that we are all on the same page moving forward as we start looking at future capital needs and that we're not sitting, not at the ready at any given time for the needs of the county and our citizens.
One other quick question. You mentioned, Brent, you mentioned an incinerator. What is that in reference to? Is that for the?
That was our previous discussion regarding the waste-to-energy incinerator.
Which DEHAC won't permit, so it's?
To my knowledge, no. I think it was just used in that as an example of a capital expense that we had discussed.
Yeah, we talked about that, but then. I don't think DEHAC will allow a permit for the amount of waste to be incinerated that would, that would be cost-effective for the project, is my understanding of what the law is right now.
Yeah, and that's, this is going back to, it's not just the conversation last week when we were working with y'all on, back in 2020, on the refinancing of some existing GOs. There was some discussion as to whether or not, and maybe at that time, the incinerator was still a feasible project or still maybe of greater interest to the county. Michael referenced this before. We have a mutual client that several, well, about 10 years ago, county client, very highly-rated county, kind of toggled back and forth between the GO and the IPRB options for the financing of an essential asset. And opted in favor of, they had more than sufficient capacity on the GO bonds to fund the project. And so they decided to go ahead and issue GO bonds, which, and it, it pretty well took out all of their, their existing GO capacity. And within a fairly short period of time afterwards, I think they would tell you that they wished they maybe had looked a little harder at the IPRB option because 10 years later, they're still struggling with a project that two years after they had done their GO bond issue, popped up as something that they wouldn't be struggling to find a funding source for it if they'd done IPRBs to begin with. But you know, I mean, hindsight's always 20/20. We just want to share with y'all that, you know, there's, there's, there are positive aspects to both structures, and there are drawbacks to both structures. And really, it's something where I think y'all need to think about what current needs are and future opportunities or potential needs. And, you know, that becomes a balancing act on what's the best structure for the county to be looking at, if there's any financing.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you both for being on the call this morning. We appreciate it.
Happy to.
Is there a motion?
Thank you very much.
Make a motion. Second, all in favor?
Thank you, gentlemen.